Ready to get started. Bills and manifests are going around. I'm going to do something a little bit different tonight just because we have a two presentations coming in from companies at seven and 7:30. So what we're going to try to do is get through as much of the agenda as we can until seven o'clock and then we'll take a break and listen to the presentations and then get back to it. So as far as we get, as far as we get, who knows? It's going to depend on discussions and such. To start off, do we have any, do we have any need for a non-public session?
No.
At all?
No.
Okay, skip over that. Any open, open pub, yeah, excuse me. Opening public comment. Mr. Breger.
Hi, my name is Mike Breger. I'm the school athletic director and a parent and a resident in Northwood. Couple of things I'd like to discuss tonight. About a year ago, Dave Ruth was a school board member, myself and Keith McQuiggin got together and discussed athletic policies that need to be revised or we would like to see revised and we had a good committee meeting on that. And we had brought forth some good recommendations, I thought. Nothing has been done with those since. Couple of months ago, I was here speaking on another issue and asked the question about, are those policies being looked at? And I think Barbie told me that somebody was hired by the school in order to look at all the policies and analyze them and so forth. So, and I don't believe anything's come of that yet. So we're now into another year with finishing a soccer season, getting ready to start a basketball season. The question of policies and how they are administered is afoot again and I would really like to see some closure come to these. And if I'm told that they're good as they stand, then I'll walk away. But I think there are some good things that we could do to make minor adjustments to help smooth the operations for the administration, for the athletic director, the coaches and the students. So I hope we can consider that. Second thing I'd like to talk about is a letter to the editor in the Sun this week that Mr. Janabhar wrote. And I'd like to, it kind of concerns my athletic department quite directly, so I'd like to address those concerns. Shouldn't take too long. This is from the letter. "Sports at Northwood School Has Become Far Too Political. It Is Led By Exactly The Same Small Group Of Millennial Parents That Are Driving The 'I Want It, I Want It Now And I Want Someone Else To Pay For It' Movement At Our School. They Are More Concerned About Expensive Bats Than Education."
One minute, Mike.
I'm sorry, more to the mic?
One more minute.
I'll go quick. "At 46-year-old, I appreciate your calling me millennial. It's really nice of you." But it says here that the parents lead the program and I want you to be, I want to be very clear that I lead the program here at Northwood School as far as athletics is concerned and I work with the administration on all questions. So if there are any concerns, please bring them directly to me and I would love to address them and work to fix them. Secondly, he comments on, "Sports are supposed to be a learning experience, to be a team player, learn, follow the rules and regulations. Have pride in your school. These are a few reasons we should have sports. Every student that meets the grade criteria should be allowed to play regardless of their ability. Parents of all students pay the same taxes. Their children all deserve the same education." Last year, we served 139 athletes that participated in all sports in Northwood School. We did not cut one single athlete that came out to try out. Some lost their eligibility for other reasons, but no one was cut from a single team. I think some of this question may have been brought up because we actually wanted to have more children join this year than were in policy, so we had to ask for permission to do that. And I do believe the board approved it unanimously. So I appreciate that very much. More kids served. I'll wrap it up as quick as I can. The school budget last year was $4,000. The 139 students over seven sports, that works out to be approximately $29 per child. Give or take the residents in Northwood. Joe could help me better, but I think that's like a buck a tax, buck a resident for our kids to play ball and to have a great experience doing it. I'll skip ahead to try to save time here as best I can. "The Philosophy Of Northwood Athletics. School Comes First, 100%. If Any Student Is Struggling, They Skip Practice, They Skip A Game, They Get The Help They Need. Academics Is The Most Important Thing. Every Coach Will Agree. Respect For Referees, Opponents, Teachers, Parents, Administration Are Top Priority And Sportsmanship Is Paramount. And No Student Is Going To Play Or Participate If They Can't Follow Through On Those Simple Things That We Ask And Expectations That We Set." And lastly, success does not mean winning, but we will compete hard and we will play to win because games of sport have winners and losers. And that's the way it is. And when you get to the middle school level, the kids want to win the games and the coaches want to help them to do that. And, you know, there are great lessons whether you win or lose. Doesn't matter. But we will teach those lessons and we will absorb those lessons. And I think everybody in here should consider that. It is not about the parents, it's about the kids 100% of the time.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Kathy Wimsat, a resident and a staff member. I have heard at past board meetings, a lot about numbers and other towns. And I know it was mentioned that a, somebody in the questionnaire from our school invited school board members into the classroom and some of those board members seemed startled that they should be in there. This is the school that you represent and I encourage you to get to know the students, get to know the staff. If you have questions about kindergarten, spend a day down there. Meet all the educators who work in kindergarten to understand what it's like at our school. If you have questions about the guidance counselors and their needs, please meet with them. See what their logs are like, how they spend their day and decide if our school needs two guidance counselors or not. If you have questions about the custodians and what they're doing, meet with them and find out what they're doing instead of just bringing it up as numbers. Get to know us, we're here.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
I'm Savannah. I'm totally out of my comfort zone. I don't ever do this, but it's the mama bear that's coming out, so here it goes. So I'm a working parent. My husband works as well. The stay in age, it seems like you need two incomes to support a family. I have two children, one's five, she turned five yesterday. She's going to go to kindergarten next year for three hours. She has been in childcare for her whole life, since she was an infant, and it's been a curriculum-based program. So she's structured all day long, she's there nine hours each day. So bringing her to a school where she's going to have three hours of education is really, really tough to swallow as a parent. You know, I feel like it's going to do her a great disservice, my son a great disservice once he gets into kindergarten. Me being a working mom, I now have to juggle before-school care, after-school care. There's really limited resources in this town, I find, for childcare. I'm planning this whole year out to try to figure out what to do to juggle this, but I really think it just, it sets a bad first impression for a student who is now introduced to a school and yet it's only three hours. I, I just don't, I don't agree with it and it's, it's going to be very difficult as a parent to juggle, you know, drop-off, pickup, where are you going to go before, where are you going to go after? I still have to work and make, make a living. And she also has a lot of anxiety too in regards to change, so that, that structure and breaking up her day just would not do, do good for her. So that's my, my speech. I hope you consider having full-day kindergartens. It would help her out and a lot of residents here out as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do the board members like to take this opportunity to speak?
I would, thank you. I want to address the sports issue. In the years I've been on the board, I find the whole sports issue difficult at best. We certainly have spent far more time on sports policies than on computer policies, for instance. And it's, it's, it's very interesting. So I was quite taken aback today when a lady called me and felt that I had targeted her entire family, from her to her husband and to her son. Frankly, I don't know her son and honestly, I don't know her husband. I wasn't targeting anybody with my letter to the editor on sports. My position is very clear. I think that taxpayer money should be used across the board for anybody that wants to play sports. I have sat here and witnessed board members who not only wanted to severely limit, in fact, our policies limit how many people can play on a sports team. We have one school board member who I rather like, I thought he was a very good school board member, but who wanted to not allow the extra players, I forget what the word is for those extra players that you have that aren't really on the team, and then he did not want to allow them to have uniforms. All of that really bothers me a lot. I think that taxpayer money should be used universally for all of the kids in the school. If frankly, 476 kids, well, we don't have that many, if 380 kids wanted to go out for soccer, I would be very personally happy to come up with the money to help them play soccer. I don't think that it should come down to how good you are. At some point, and I think that's high school and college, it's more as a competitive issue and if you can't play, well, then you don't get to be on the team. I've had three kids, none of them, except for one, ever really wanted to play sports. He was never allowed to, he simply wasn't able to make the grade for one reason or another. On the other hand, he won an award from Coe Brown for being the most interested in sports. Wasn't on a team, but he was at least interested. I just think that's wrong. If you want to play sports in K through eight, I think you should be allowed. I was told by this lady that, and her husband, as I understand, coaches soccer, if I heard her right, that all members, all students who wanted to play on that team were allowed to play, so they must have come under the amount that's in our policy that says can play. But, so if, if not, and they were allowed, so then we should start looking at policies again. You know, it, it's just wrong. Every kid that wants to play sports in K through eight should be allowed. If it's valuable to one, it's, it's just as valuable to another.
Thanks. Any other board members?
Yeah, I think this would all be solved if we had a full-time athletic director. I'm going to be having this conversation.
All right, we're going to close the opening public comment and move on to school board business. First up is the approval of the school board minutes for September 15th. Any discussion on these?
What does, what does the sign holder there, what does he make? Is it $15 a day?
No.
$15 an hour, two hours a day.
Okay.
But he works one day, one hour a day, so.
Two hours, that's what, yeah, that's what I thought. So line 73, it says two hours a day times 180 days and then it says $15 a day. I thought it was an hour.
Yeah, it's $15 an hour.
$15 a day. Yeah, pretty low. Anything else, is everybody ready to approve these? All in favor?
I have one. I'm sorry, just correction, I wasn't there, I'm pretty sure the 15th, and a lot of the votes were five-nothing.
My notes were not clear, I didn't think you were.
I was, I was here for, I was at the beginning, but then had to leave, so.
Okay.
Just changed it to four-nothing.
I didn't know when you left.
Pretty early on, I think.
Unfortunately. I was thinking I was still.
I was in the spirit, I was.
You agreed with everything.
I did.
Do you know when you left?
That's what happens when you.
Do you remember?
I made no votes.
No votes, okay.
I'm standing against agreeing with the majority anyway, so. Okay, all in favor with these modifications?
Aye.
opposed?
Stained.
Five, four, four, zero, one. To make it clear. We have no non-public meeting notes. Assistant Superintendent, you have, you do it 15 minutes?
I can do it in 30 seconds.
All right then, go for it.
So time, things change sometime in a week, so I, I wrote to you that you had seven new special education students register for school this year. Two of those students require to serve as a one-to-one para-professional and on the horizon, we may have another. So Mrs. Young and Mr. Alford and her team are interviewing for a NACTUTER right now and another one-to-one para and possibly another. The first two positions, one's funded in the budget, the other, I can fund out of cost savings in the para lines and some cost savings in out-of-district placements. And the third one, I will be analyzing where that is going to come from next week if we need it. So just to alert the board of what's going on. Currently, we're working on collecting the required data for indicator 12, which is the timeliness for early transitions, big sentence. But I will let you know that in your next packet, you are going to be getting a report from the state that explains what all the indicators are. And I'm pleased to announce that when I opened the mail this afternoon, the Northwood School District has met all the requirements and purposes of the Individuals With Disability Education Act. I think this is your third year in a row, so good job to Northwood and actually the other two districts too.
Well, good job to your staff.
Yeah, it's generally the principals of staff, I mean, it's really your school staff who does this.
It's everyone.
Para-professional negotiations for Northwood have begun. I did a webinar this week on a grant from the Department of Ed on assistive technology. Mrs. McNeil and I have begun budget planning for next year and I've been in court probably six times for Northwood students this month and below that is your census.
Anybody have any questions for Assistant Superintendent?
Would you like me to update the board on the policy manual real quick?
Yes, that'd be great.
I think this might answer one of the audience members' questions, but at the same time, the New Hampshire School Boards Association dropped off the updated policy manual. Dr. Kadomski gave it to me this afternoon and Mrs. Harper and I have a meeting scheduled to review that and we'll take a look at those recommendations for the athletic policies first.
Awesome. Thank you. Anything else? Ms. Young, if you don't mind starting, we may not get all the way through it.
I'll do my best.
Continue.
So I'll, in the interest of being brief, you have my written report, I want to start out by saying that here in mid-October or almost mid-October, we continue to be really happy to be here, we're excited to be here, we've got a really good sense of what's going on in the school and there's a lot of great stuff going on in the school and potential for a lot more. And case in point, the science kneecaps, fourth graders were eight points above the state average and eighth graders were five points above the state average. And so really want to congratulate and commend our staff for that and our kids. I provided open house data, but I gave you the wrong graph, so I'm going to pass it on the right graph. And then also coming around is the support staff clubs. I think Mrs. Gulick Ryan had tried to reach out to board members to get some feedback on these ahead of time and she hadn't heard, so she asked me today to just bring this to the board tonight. So in addition to the action items requested on here, I'm going to add approval of those. Hiring, we continue to look for para professionals. We've made a couple of offers and people have declined, so we continue to look. We're still looking for a part-time custodian to start in January as well. Our first professional development day last week went really well and we anticipate another good one tomorrow. Our building leadership team met for the first time yesterday and really had a positive meeting. We grounded ourselves in the principles of what learning looks like, did some sort of needs analysis and we'll continue to work on setting goals and defining our work in the next few meetings.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Do you have any information on why our candidates declined?
My guess is that it's the pay and having to deduct two, two steps, but I think they're too polite to say that outright.
Sure. It's good to know. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
So you originally asked us to approve a.
So there's a donation from Bottom Line Technologies for the class of 2016, 17, I think, or 18? 18, was it? 2018. And then Mrs. Clemmons had requested donations, which we would like your approval for, and then the approval of the clubs for support staff.
All right, so let's start, is there a motion to accept the donation from Bottom Line Technologies, the amount of $90?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve.
What are the donations? Or just donations in general?
There was one donation.
Yeah.
One donation.
They're looking.
No, it says, "Consider approval of Ms. Clemmons' request for donations."
Yeah, last year, she did this last year also and I don't remember how we approved it, but she, it's the math teacher and she has the kids keep track of money in.
Checking accounts.
Like in their checking account. They earn money in her class and then she gets donations from the community and everything and they can bid at the end of the year. So I don't remember how we did it. So she's not asking for a donation from us, I think she's asking that we.
Approval of accept donations.
Accept donations to her classroom.
So the donations are money or?
Cards, money.
$50 to Johnsons?
Yeah. My son won a fishing pole last year and some lures. Or no, he bought it, sorry, or.
They buy it with the money that they, the fake money that they own.
Right, they bid on it. Yeah, they bid on it.
All right, so do we, can a motion second on that?
I'm trying to think of how to make the motion, I don't remember how we did it.
Motion to accept donations.
For the gold math program.
Right, second.
Yeah.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero there, two.
Could you go back, what did you ask Ms. Young?
Did I ask?
Yep.
I asked why the, if she had any idea why the para's that we were looking to hire declined the job.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, clubs of these?
These have not because I had just talked to Shane about this actually at the beginning. This was sent out to us a couple of weeks ago and I sent you guys an email saying I wasn't as familiar with it and then I just had the para contract sent to me because I'm not as familiar with the para contract, so I didn't know if it was in their contract or not that they had to meet.
Okay.
Because this is the first time.
I've seen, yeah.
Yeah, that the para's have come through like this, so no, we have not met, that the clubs committee has not met to go over this.
I mean, in previous years, I remember both sets of clubs, we did require them to go through the clubs committee just before the board would approve them. Whether or not it was in the contract, I believe, I believe it is in the contract for the, for the teachers, but maybe it's not for para's. So we'll meet with Colleen and we'll vote on the 20th.
She, I, I do think she tried to reach out to set up the meeting and wasn't able to do so and the concern is just that some of these clubs, like the Drama Club, has already started. So whatever you need to do, I just. She did reach out and I said that, she did reach out and then I reached out to some of the board members to ask about, because I did not have a copy of this. And so Shane and I will get back to her.
So we'll put this on the agenda for the 20th?
But I'm not going to break their contract.
Yeah, sorry. Take a look at that, too.
I haven't looked at, ooh, you know what, I forgot to get this.
Okay, was there anything else you had for us?
Any.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Young at this time?
If we could just take like three minutes recess, we'll set up the projector and they're all set to go, so.
All right, yeah, let's do that then.
Questions tonight, this is our first one from Human Dynamics and I'll let you introduce yourself and off and running.
Okay, thank you. My name is Stephen Gianati and my colleague is?
Jerry King. Am I supposed to give that?
Well, just maybe for introductions.
And my name is Jerry King. So I'll stand next to you, Stephen.
Okay. So we're going to spend about 10 or 15 minutes just giving a short overview of the content and the intention of our proposal. There'll be a time obviously afterwards for us to answer any questions that you have in terms of the specifics of it, but I will probably go fairly quickly because I know probably the richest stuff is when we engage in a dialogue. So I'll just go through a few slides just to give you an overview and an orientation as to what our intention is with the proposal that we provided. Is that good? Are we good to go? All right, good. So first of all, one of the main questions might be, why should you, or should you consider us, meaning the two of us? And here are some reasons and there are some other things. What's our approach? What's our, what's our experience? Little bit about our education, also about our client base in terms of who we've worked with in the past and also the fact that we have pretty considerable roots in the state of New Hampshire and we think we understand New Hampshire pretty well. So the first one is our approach. We believe that any kind of strategic planning oftentimes starts at the wrong place. Oftentimes people say, "All right, I want to have a strategic planning session, so let's just figure out what should we do." So we just get into the action items, when in fact, most strategic plans fail because they don't do a couple of things before that. And that is to really clarify one, two, and three. Really understanding why do we exist? What's the purpose of this organization that we're talking about? And then secondly, we talk about what are the things that we value the most that are inviolate, that no matter what, we will always strive towards in order to identify who we are. So we answer the question, why? Why do we exist? Number two, who are we as an organization? And number three, we answer the question, if we are successful, what would that look like? If we did what we were supposed to do, if we realized our purpose, what would that look like? And most strategic plans don't ask those questions before they get into the, to the actual strategy process. So then we go into the other parts of actually figuring out the little stuff that we need to do in terms of the weeds. So another thing is that our approaches involve a pre, a during, and a post and we feel very strongly that there are a lot of things that you have to do to prime the pumps, so to speak. We don't just show up and start. We have to make sure that whoever's involved in this process understands expectations, outcomes, and also their specific roles within that. During process, we have a number of meetings that we will be doing, essentially work sessions with those that we identify, or you identify actually, as the stakeholders of this process. And also the most important thing, and I would argue the hardest part, is not the doing and not the pre-stuff, but the post. Because I don't know about you, but anytime I've gone to something, I really enjoyed it and I really felt like we made great progress and I leave all excited and energized and then the tough stuff kicks in like, oh, we got to do some stuff around that. And that's where we believe that if we don't clarify this part, the other stuff is destined to not be helpful. So that's, this is a very important part that I think many strategic plans don't take into consideration. So why us in terms of our experience? We have, I don't like saying it, we have close to 70, maybe even more years.
Yeah, we're really old.
Doing this process. We have a pretty successful record of dealing with not just. We have a pretty successful record of dealing with not just normal training things, but also some very serious and complex things. And we can talk about if, in fact, we have time and you want to get into some more complex elements of our work. But we have a long history of doing not just the easy stuff, but also the really complex stuff. There are some clients that call us, because they have a very unique and very difficult situation to deal with. And then also, we've worked extensively with all levels of organizations, at the individual level, the group level, as well as the whole organization level. So we have a sense of the whole system. We know that if you do one thing, you're going to affect another thing. And so our whole approach has to be about systems and systems thinking. Another one is our education. Jerry King has a PhD in social psychology. She understands the human dynamics of things. Oh, that's a good name for a company.
I think I'll do that.
I have a master's in business education, and I have lots of extensive, we both have extensive training in systems thinking and a lot of other programs that we've gone to in terms of updating and keeping our own saws sharp. Our client base, we've given you the list of people, a partial list, actually, of the people that we've worked with, the organizations that we've worked with. We have a very rich mix. It's not one industry, like high-tech or only education. We think we bring to the table a really, I would say, beautiful and really powerful cross-pollination of learning from multiple industries, whether it's manufacturing, or high-tech, or education, whether it's grammar school, whether it's middle school, high school, or college, private school, public school. We bring all of that to the table. So I think we bring some pretty powerful mixes and hybrids of perspectives to this table. And we've also worked at the local level, the national level, as well as international level. Lastly, we have deep roots in the state of New Hampshire. I'm born here. Jerry is a New Englander, and she's been a long, how long you lived in New Hampshire now?
Many decades.
Many decades. So we are heavily invested in making sure that our state stays the great state that it is. We know we have challenges. Education is probably one of the most difficult, difficult arenas to work in, to play in, to help guide as a board. It is extremely complex. There are only a few other kinds of organizations that I think I've worked with that are as complex, because it isn't just about you being able to determine your own future. You've got so many stakeholders involved, it's almost impossible to please everybody. And that makes it really difficult and challenging. So we have deep roots here, and we have a reason to want to help state of New Hampshire entities like this. We believe that the future, not just of the world, but also our democracy, is dependent upon public education, being what it needs to be. I just, I feel it in my blood, and I know you do, too, because you've talked about it many times. So I'm going to end now, and I'm going to let Jerry say a few words, but really, we believe that as a partnership, and we do approach it as a partnership, we don't, we don't consider ourselves hired guns, or consultants, or outsiders. We consider ourselves partners with you. And so we believe that if we were to actually partner with you, we would be able to do incredible things for moving the organization in the direction that it needs and wants to go. So thank you for that short moment of stub, and you take over.
I have, and I will leave these with you, a very thick strategic process, strategic planning process. I often train people to facilitate strategic plans. It is a copyright, so it's fine that I leave it with you, but I ask you not to share it or to, I don't know, if I open a magazine and it's published, I'll have to come back to you and say, "Not a good idea." And it's also a very short, couple of pages, that talks about the process I'm going through. And also, I have permission, and I'm leaving strategic plans that, there are three or four of them in there, that you can also have. I have permission by the clients to leave those. You've probably, if you've ever been through a strategic planning process, you know that they used to be this thick when we came out, and what they did is they held up furniture. People would go through this whole process, have a thick, at the end, a strategic plan, never look at it again, because it was so overwhelming. Now, in the last few years, it has been absolutely accepted that your strategic plan, the end result, will be two or three pages long. It will talk about the mission, it will talk about the vision, your values, those things that are important to you, strategic intentions, and what we usually do is bring you through a process. And when I say usually, because we are partnering with you, you may have some unique responses that you'd like us to take into account. But people at all levels of the organization, whomever it is you decide to be part of this process, and it's an exploratory process, where we gather a lot of information, where you gather a lot of information, we feel very strongly that you should not pay us to gather information that you can easily gather yourself. And then we will talk, we'll get together with folks and go through strategic intentions. So what intentions do you have? They're usually three to six intentions. And then, general, action steps. How are you going to make that happen? Beyond that, we then suggest that you have subcommittees that work on those intentions. The group, and sometimes it's one group doing that, and sometimes it's several, because they're really in very different directions. What those, what those groups do, those subgroups do, is come up with specific action steps to make it happen, and a timeline by which they will happen, and constantly communicate with each other, so that you know what's happening. So if somebody says, if a group says, "We're going to do this by year one," and you don't, it's not, "Oh, my goodness, they didn't do their job," but they say, "Here were the barriers to making this happen, so you might have to revisit it." So the point is, it's a lot of work, and it's very intense, and it's very important that people are heard. They may not get everything they want, but they need to know why they're not getting what they want. And in the end, you end up with two or three pages, so it looks like you just did this in an afternoon. I will reiterate what Abraham Lincoln said when he wrote this long letter to a friend and said, "Sorry, it's such a long letter, we didn't have time to write a short one." That's exactly what happens. So you will have your strategic plan, usually it's three to five years, and what that really means realistically is it's three years. But you have some thoughts about five years, and also, what I often say, and you'll hear me if you decide to use this, reiterate, dare to dream. Both Stephen and I have worked with so many organizations, and what happens is they realize there are financial constraints, and so they work around, their strategic plan is around all those constraints. And then, if something comes their way, somebody donates money for something, or somehow the budget increases, they're not ready for it. So what we suggest is you dare to dream, and if you can't do it, then you know, of course, you have to accept some of that reality. But it's a three-to-five-year plan, and you don't know what's going to happen two and a half years from now, and how that might change. So that's in it in a nutshell. I'm going to leave these with you, and I can pass those around, and we're happy to answer questions, as we should be happy to answer questions. Can you just...
I also brought a sample strategic plan that came from a company that I worked with. I'm going to have to take this with me, but it's a, it's a very extensive one, extremely detailed, but it also has built into it an actual tracking system at the end, through an Excel spreadsheet, so that you can track every specific item, in terms of a tactic or an activity or a strategy, in terms of where it is. And so that would be part of what we would offer you, because like we said earlier, the easy part is the pre and the during. The post is really the hardest, because we get swept away by work and everything else that happens, and we say, "Oh, yeah, that retreat that we went on, we have strategic plans somewhere. Where is that thing?" So I'll just pass this around, you can take a look at it, but I will need to take that back. So, questions?
Do you have a copy of the slides? I mean, I went through them real quick, and I didn't get a chance to read them all.
Yes, I can email them to you.
Absolutely.
Send it to, just let me know who I should send it to, or want me to give you my card, and you can connect with me. It would be helpful.
I'll take your card and email you.
Okay.
Give you the address. Thanks.
Questions? Reactions, thoughts?
Have you worked with other schools nearby?
I've done a lot of work in the last couple of years with the university system, actually, to do their strategic plans, yeah. That was the most recent. But both of us work nationally and internationally, but as Stephen said, we have obviously an affinity for New Hampshire and an understanding of New Hampshire.
I've worked with some private schools, both Exeter, Phil's End, over, several grammar schools, one of which I'm working with NASS, and there's an issue with one of the major leaders within the organization, and that person is trying to figure out how to be the leader that he or she has to be to get out of the situation that they're in. It's a very complex situation, and I've been working with them for about several months now, and working directly with the superintendent and the staff at the school. So, yeah, we're pretty immersed in the education system at all levels. And also, I don't know if this helps, but I was an apprentice to Daniel Kim, who has been doing strategic planning with the NEA. Now, I know the union doesn't necessarily sometimes have positive relationships, I know there are a lot of politics, but through that six-year stint of working with Daniel Kim and working with the NEA at the top leadership level, and all of the reps from around the country, I got a really good feel of what's going on out there, because they were not shy in expressing their thoughts and their feelings about the challenges that are out there, beyond, you know, union dynamics.
I still don't understand, I'm trying to, what is a strategic plan going to do for us?
Great question.
So, we've had, in the last number of years, an occasion to do a management study. We spent a lot of bucks.
Yeah.
It was really worth the money.
Good.
We also had occasion to do a study on special education that returned to us five or six times what we paid for it. What is a strategic plan? What is it going to look like? What is it going to do for us? I don't understand, so I'm a dummy. Could you get down to basics and...
I agree with everything you said, except for the last part.
Okay.
I think it's a great question. I think it's really important. Probably the benefit, the biggest benefit of a strategic plan is it helps you make decisions. So when you say, "Should we go in this direction or that direction?" You have a plan that says, "In three to five years, this is where we want to be." It's a decision-making guide. It doesn't mean that you can't fear from it, but you have to make a conscious decision to do that. That is what I think has the most important piece. Secondly, it means that the community, the educational community and the larger community understands where your priorities are. Because what your strategic intentions are, are articulating your priorities, how we're going to make it happen, given that nothing unusual happens to interfere with that, and the timeline by which we will do that. The third piece is, in order to do a good strategic plan, you have to have input from all the stakeholders, or representatives from all the stakeholders, so people feel like they're represented there. What people usually say is, "It was a huge benefit to us," because otherwise, we're all over the place, and we're not sure if we should do this or we should not do this. So back to the first thing I said, I think it's a great decision-making vehicle.
And to add a little bit more to that, when it comes time to making a decision about where we're going to spend X dollars, in what context do we make that decision? And the strategic planning process clarifies, where do we go for truth when it comes time to making those tough decisions? Who are we? What's our true purpose? And if we spend the money, can you make the line from this spending to our purpose, and what we're supposed to create as a result of our purpose? Without that clarification, we could sit around and argue all day long as to whether we should spend $5,000 here or $5,000 over there. But this clarifies where we go when we don't know the answer to that question. And it also, afterwards, gives us a process by which we track the decisions that we do make.
So, I mean, just listening to you, what came out to me was, you're going to show us how to spend a bunch of money.
No.
So if that's not true, are you going to show us how to spend wisely the money that we have?
We're not going to show you how to spend your money. We are going to help you create a framework by which you decide how to spend your money.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
We would not, we would not assume that we could even do that for you, even if you asked us to.
We'd be really rich if we could do that. Boy, that'd be cool.
It'd be inappropriate for us to tell you how to spend your money.
Right.
Well, and hinging a little bit on what Tim just said, can you give, I don't know if you can or not, give a little bit of how you, or what you did with, like, Exeter and the other place that you said, because, I mean, the goal, the goal of any school is to educate the kids to the best of our abilities, so I would think, you know, so how did you, like, what, because again, like Tim, I have no idea what a strategic plan is. This is, like, way out of my realm. I have no idea. So everyone sitting here, everyone sitting in this room, that is what their goal is, is to educate these children, because this is, these are the people that are going to be paying our bills when we get older, and, you know, putting us in the nursing homes. So we want them to do it the right way. So, like, how, what types of things did you help Exeter with, or another school, another elementary, or, we're not an elementary school, we're a K through 8 school.
Right, right. There is an analysis that starts at the beginning, that looks at your strengths and weaknesses, I don't like that word, but that's the word that's used, and all your opportunities and the threats that are out there, so that you can finally organize and look and say, "Okay, where do we shine? And where we don't shine, what stands in the way of our being able to do that?" The second piece is, what are the pieces? So usually, there is an intention around finances, a financial piece. There might be an intention around educating the community, just not the youngsters who are here, so that people appreciate us and know what we're doing. You can certainly add things that, please, I don't want to take over.
Well, you had said, "We all know what our goal is, not just to educate our children," parenthetically, "so that they can be productive members of the society, and therefore, take care of us in our old age," more or less, you said that. So if that is our goal, if I were to then pass out, give me my five cards, to the entire audience here, and I said, "Okay, so what does that look like? What are the chances of us all defining that in an aligned way? I'm not asking it to be exactly the same, but isn't it possible that we might have different ideas about how to do that and what it would look like?"
Absolutely.
"And the kind of values that we must uphold in order to do that collaboratively?"
"And the amount of money that it takes."
That's right, absolutely.
"And with the stakeholders included, or in some cases, not included? Without doing that, you run the real risk of making decisions, sometimes in a vacuum, or in a non-aligned way is probably a better way to say that."
Okay.
In a strategic process, when it's done well, make sure that those things are in place. Does that help a little bit?
It does, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I want to reiterate, it doesn't mean that we expect you all to think the same way. Actually, if we did, we just need one of you and a good computer. We're hoping there's a diversity of thought. We're hoping you get the input that you need. Part of our jobs is to come up with the underlying themes, and to communicate, and say back to you, "Is this what you think was going on as well?" So we're in constant back and forth to make sure that it's not just our perceptions, but it's also your perception.
And what do we do when we disagree? What is the process? How do we actually break a logjam, if in fact, we're in the process of saying, "Okay, the school system should look like this in five years"? But what if you see it very differently than you? How do we negotiate that conversation in a way that moves it forward and not gets it logjammed?
So at the end of this process, you said the strategic plan's going to be three, five, eight pages long. And I take those eight pages, and I give them to the school board, I give them to the budget committee, the staff, all the community members, the selectmen. How is, what is it going to look like, and how are those eight pages going to help us move forward?
Okay, those pages, and they'll probably be less than eight, will be, again, your mission, your vision, your values. It looks so simple. It takes a long time to get there, of course, in a complicated time. Your strategic intentions, the action steps you're going to put in place to make that happen. But I want to go back to saying, how do I give this to everyone? I hope the folks you just mentioned are representatives of those groups will be part of this, though it's not going to be a shock. Okay, there are a few secret places. This is what used to happen, by the way. Two or three people at the top got together and did a strategic plan over a weekend. We strongly suggest that that not happen, that we have representative groups. If there's a diversity of thought, even if there's conflict, we're used to that. We facilitate it all the time. What usually happens, I have not had a situation where the strategic plan ended up being conflictual, then, because by that time, everyone was in and involved and represented.
So do you have strategies for pulling in community members? I mean, the people in this room are probably, people that are interested, it's the people that are outside this room that we'd really like to get, you know, their opinions on.
Right.
Have you done that in the past?
Yeah, there are a lot of ways you can do that. Focus groups, surveys, one-on-one interviews, whatever process people are willing and able to participate in. We might have to do them all, because some people may not be available for a focus group, but I could call them and find out what their thoughts are. We'd have to decide who would be a representation of your stakeholders. And maybe there are so few that maybe we can do them all. I don't know what the landscape looks like for you all. I'd like to go back to your question just for a second about these eight pages, and I send them here and there and there. I'm not sure I would recommend you do that. I would suggest that we have a real clear process about how best to communicate that in a way, preferably face-to-face. Because when I get a piece of paper from you as a superintendent, I probably have more questions than it does answers. And so, I would suggest that the first time anybody sees it, they have the opportunity to engage in a dialogue with you or your representatives and/or with us, so that there is an opportunity to understand, so why did you make this decision? Oh, okay, I understand, or gee, I'm going to have trouble with that, help me out. Because I think that's, that's our responsibility with you to make sure that that post-piece, which I said earlier, is the hardest and the trickiest. Now, I would suggest that we will be able to give you, in addition to those eight pieces of paper that are your official strategic plan, some backup paper if in fact, you needed it. Like, there's going to be a lot of stuff that we do behind the scenes, and you might even want to do the Excel spreadsheet, which would be another four or five pages around how you actually track this. Who's responsible for this activity? When does it due? How do we check in with that person? Is it a red, green, or yellow zone? Those kinds of things. But you would need somebody to kind of champion this process. And, you know, we can help as needed, but you need to at some point make it your own. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I'm hoping that by the time we're done the strategic planning process, that everybody already knows what's in those eight pages.
That's the goal.
Absolutely.
If not, then we'd fail.
That's right.
Well, part of being part of the stakeholder group would be to take on the responsibility of communicating to the stakeholders that aren't there. I mean, those would be the evangelists, if you will, of, you know, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to accomplish. And maybe even bring some more people in. Because you can't do it by yourself, right? No, can we do it without everybody's help?
And transparency, you're describing transparency. I can't tell you how important that is. It's very important, because then you're not spending a whole lot of time at the other end rationalizing why you made the decisions you made. Again, people are, there will still be people who will be annoyed by it, distressed by it, upset by it. We have to listen to them. You know, it's easy to say, well, we're not going to listen to them, but we really have to listen to them, because they have things to say. They're representing a cohort of people out there that are important. The other thing to, and I'm looking at you because you had that great question about, is this worth it? The advantage to outside facilitators is that we don't have a stake in the, we don't have a stake in what's going to happen, meaning we don't work here. It's not going to affect us, so we can completely 100% focus on the process. And the outcome is not going to affect our lives on a day-to-day basis, although we care very much about it. We are completely process-oriented and focused. And that helps, and we don't have a history that says, well, I know why you're saying what you're saying. I have no idea why you're saying what you're saying, but I'm fascinated by what you're saying. We have to get that information in.
Also, when it's facilitated externally, everybody gets to participate.
Right.
I mean, if you as a superintendent, or the assistant superintendent decides to facilitate this process, he, because they're both he's, right, wouldn't be able to facilitate and participate at the same time. It's a mixed role. So, that's, I think, another reason to consider having an outside helper on this kind of stuff. It's hard to facilitate and participate at the same time and be seen as objective.
Right.
Questions over here? Are they allowed to ask questions too? I'm sorry.
Comment that maybe would help people understand. Every year, we create a budget with no plan.
A budget with no plan, is that what you're saying?
With no plan. And this is a six-step process to the budget, and the first step is strategic planning. And this is where it starts. We have a budget. If we were to start a business today, or start a new school, we would do strategic planning first, you know, wherever we're going to be, five, 10, 15 years. So, I am totally in agreeance with starting a strategic plan and getting the community involved. It's just, year after year, we have no plan.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know.
So, then it's your best guess, isn't it?
It is.
I think we'll need this.
I think we need this. What's next? Okay.
Well, it'll be informed by-
It's also that you're budgeting, you know, 18 months out, you know?
Exactly.
When you're doing a budget, it's 18 months out. It's sort of like a strategic plan. You're strategically planning for five years, but we're also budgeting for 18 months out, you know, so you can't. I don't have a crystal ball to tell me what's going to happen in 18 months. You know, our boiler could blow up.
That's right.
There's one thing that binds us all together, and it's the budget. It's the budget that binds us all together. It's such an essential tool that you can use, right? You've got to make it the best possible situation for everybody. And it's the only thing that binds us all together.
Well, and that's why I said, we all have a different idea of how much it should cost to educate our children also, and that's-
Yeah.
If this makes you feel any better, if you had all the money in the world, you didn't have to worry about it, it would be just as difficult to make those decisions.
That's true.
So, sometimes we think it's only the restriction of funds that makes it hard to do that. That's not true. We still should be making thoughtful decisions that work. And in your case, you know, businesses have to do that, corporations have to do that, but in your case, you want, these kids are going to move through the process whether you do this or not. So, wouldn't it be wonderful for them to move through and have a thoughtful framework? Anything else?
Do you have anything? I know you haven't had a chance to talk, okay. My one, I just have one final question, I guess, which is, what happens after the three to five years? I mean, what are we left with then? Do we start over? Or we, do we have some sort of framework for moving forward?
Well, in our proposal, it talks about the fact that we should do a six-month and a one-year review. And at that one-year review, we would probably start talking, and again, we, I don't know if you would still be working with us or not, that would be something we'd have to talk about, but whoever is guiding this process should be responsible for making sure at six months and 12 months, there is a regathering of the original stakeholders to the degree that's possible, and say, okay, how did we do this last year? Did we guess pretty closely? How are we doing? But we would have to say, what horizons do we want to work with going forward? And so, if it's three years, then we do it every two and a half years, right? We want to be six months or so ahead of that curve, right? Plus, you have to turn your budget in, how soon before the budget? When do you have to submit a budget ahead of time? How many months ahead before the fiscal year?
It goes in, we're starting the budget process now to go into effect July 1st.
Okay, so, what's the deadline for you to submit your budget?
To who?
December.
Well, this is-
December. Yeah, but I mean, you have to have it ready and finalized by December. Okay, so, yeah, that's-
I don't know who you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, and answer, another way to answer your question is, once you do a strategic plan, and it turns out to be a really good plan for you, then as you go forward, it's easier. You have a framework, you know how you're making decisions, that's helping out. There are certain things that end up, every five years, every 10 years on the plan, financial sustainability is usually one of those. You don't want to presume you're going to do that. I assume that you're going to do that. And so, you already have a framework to make decisions, and then you're allowing new information in, which is very important, because all kinds of things happen, as you know, that affect how you do your work.
Yeah. If this is done really well, whatever money you spend on this process, and with whomever you spend it on, you should be able to use this same plan, more or less, and at the end of, or near the end of it, you can just ask three simple questions. What do we start doing? What do we stop doing? And what do we continue doing, in order for us to keep going? Now, that's simplifying it a little bit, but that's essentially what you have to figure out when you're looking at where you've come for the strategic plan that you've engaged in. And, you know, with some minor tweaking, chances are, you don't want to keep a lot of the stuff that you're doing right. But there'll probably be some changes.
Any last questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, okay.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you all very much. Good luck. I'm a very small, one-person consulting firm out of line in New Hampshire, which is by Hanover, if you don't know where that's at. Excuse me, sir?
Yeah, let's go into video.
Public access.
Okay. Where's the video camera at?
They're all around.
We've got them hidden. Do you mind if I take this out? Is that okay? How are we doing? How are we doing? All right, all right, we're good now. Okay, great. So, I really have two objectives tonight, and the first objective is to talk about what a strategic plan is, and why strategic planning is important. And my second objective, then, is to talk about the process that I use to get to a strategic plan. Before I do any of that, though, let me just give some quick background on me. And I am, for the last 14 years, have worked in education. For a part of that time, I worked in a school district. Prior to moving to New Hampshire, I was an assistant superintendent in a school district outside of, right outside of Denver, Colorado. And then I moved to New Hampshire six years ago, and during that time, I've worked for the state of New Hampshire. I was appointed by Governor Lynch to be the Director of Instruction at the State Department of Education. And then, for the last five years, I have worked as an independent consultant, working on things like performance management, strategic planning, closing the achievement gap, particularly for students who have special needs. Yeah? Yeah, let's set it up, just so, it'll keep me on point. Oh, yeah, thanks.
Hello, my computer, we'll have that capability.
Yes, I surface.
Yeah. Nope. I have another one, though, go get that one.
Okay.
Do you want to keep it?
We'll keep going. I'm actually just going to put my computer up for a second. It doesn't, unfortunately, this, you guys know this, right? That now they sell computers and they don't have VGA inputs.
Yeah, by the adapter.
Yeah, it's nearly impossible to find a computer with a VGA adapter in it, and so-
Does it have VGA on it?
This does not have VGA, unfortunately. So, I got the wrong impression about, does it have a USB coming out of it? Do we have USB into this projector?
I believe you have a USB. Do you have any USB? If you got it.
I do have USB.
We just need a USB cord, which we don't have.
All right, we'll see if this gets worked out. But first, let's start with what a strategic plan is. And a strategic plan and a strategic planning process is really a deliberative and disciplined process for coming to decisions and actions that will shape and guide where a school district is headed. And I want to make an important point about that, which is, one, from my perspective, and there'll be people that won't necessarily come with, come at this from the same perspective as me, I believe in deliberation. I believe that an important part of what we do when we develop a strategic plan is that we have a conversation. And many times, that can be the most important thing that comes out of it, is that we actually take time to talk about problems that we're facing and the solutions that can potentially solve those problems. So, one, it's deliberative. Two, it's disciplined. We still follow a process. There's a number of steps in how we come to a strategic plan, and I'm going to walk through those steps, hopefully. If we get some visuals in here, everybody will be able to follow along with me. But we go through a set of steps to get to this strategic plan, and it's disciplined in that process. I don't know, actually.
Is it small USB? Well, on both ends?
Big to small.
Oh, you have a, yeah, you have a full-size USB right there.
There's a small one.
And a small one on the other, yeah.
We're getting there.
Okay. Thank you, Gary.
Oh, yeah. Thanks, guys. My computer hears it, yeah. Just a second here.
It's usually the one that turns it over. Is it FN F7?
F6.
Processing unless you're hooked up to the- Now, the last guy did this. He unplugged that, and plugged it back in again.
I don't know nothing about computers.
It's FN F6.
James, you want me to fix it?
Would you? Turn it on and off.
Throw it through the window, doesn't help him.
I turned off the-
Why don't we try Mr. Alford's? He said he knows his will work.
Definitely change anywhere we're-
Yeah.
Okay, should we give it a shot here? Mr. Alford?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Here I am.
All right.
Take this piece out, this will go well.
He might be able to.
All right, well.
We won't kind of get your time.
Go ahead.
I'll try to be brief, anyway. This is the least interesting part.
We have 469 students use computers, not one of them will work? You have a USB on that one?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, let's go with that little guy. Not that one.
No, okay, go ahead.
Not that one, don't do it.
A Windows P, once it's hooked up. Hold down the Windows button, hit P.
USB is-
Windows P?
Windows P.
The computer.
The Window button, P.
We're installing a device. Let me take a couple minutes.
It's installing a device forever.
No, what it needs to-
It's a device setup.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, while we're trying to make this happen, let me- Sorry, while we're trying to make this happen, let me continue with what I was saying. When we get to the strategic plan, so the process is about being deliberative and disciplined. And when we get to the strategic plan, the point of the plan, from my perspective, and other folks are going to see this differently, but I create a plan and work with organizations to create a plan that's at the about 30,000-foot level. In other words, we're not down telling the school district what the timelines are for everything in this plan. We're not deciding what individual action steps are, when they'll be completed, but we're setting strategy for the organization, where we're headed in the future. And so, part of that process is really building a bridge, and this is what the plan does for us. It builds a bridge from where we are today to the future. And so, let me briefly speak about common reasons for strategic planning. In your folders, and whenever I talk to boards, I always hand this article out. On the right-hand side of your folders, there's a list of the eight behaviors of effective school boards. And there's not a lot of research on effective school boards, but there's research out of the Iowa, it was funded by the Iowa School Boards Association. It's called the Lighthouse Project. And the Lighthouse Project, what it did was tried to find out, it compared effective school, or highly, high-performing school districts with low-performing school districts. And then it looked at boards and said, what are the characteristics of boards in high-performing school districts? And they found these eight things to be really key to effective school boards. They commit to a vision. They have shared beliefs and values. They focus on student achievement. They're collaborative, or have a collaborative relationship among each other. They're data savvy. They align and sustain resources. So, in other words, they make sure that their resources are aligned with their priorities, and they make sure that they sustain those priorities. Seventh, they're united with leadership. In other words, they're not fighting with a superintendent or whoever else is on the leadership team of the school district. And last is that they take part in board development activities. And this is actually, I don't know about you guys, but when I talk to school boards, and I spend a reasonable amount of time working with school boards, this is the hardest one to convince them of, because they feel like it takes money that's being spent on board development. It's taking money from kids. And the research is showing that it's important for the board to engage in these board development activities. It brings them closer together, it improves their ability to be board members. So, I've never had a great deal of success convincing boards that this is important, but I always put a plug in for it. Make sure you're going to training and doing it together, because it can only improve the performance of the school district, your performance, and that has an impact on kids. So, those are sort of the common things that effective school boards do, and none of this can be done without a strategic plan. There was a report that came out a couple of years ago called "The Killer Bs," and it was all about school districts and school boards. And if you want, email me, I'll make sure you get a copy of the report. But one of the things that it said in there, and I can't remember what all the Bs are, but buses, I believe the three Bs were buses, buildings, and budgets. And what the report basically said is that we spend so much time talking about these three things when we get together as a leadership team and a school board, that it doesn't allow us to talk about the things that we need to do better to improve as an organization. And so, what they advocate for in this is making sure that we spend some time focused on strategic conversations. And I don't know if you guys have seen this before, but the numbers I've seen is that we spend about 90% of our time as either school boards or members of leadership teams on the 10% of least important things. And one of the things I would tell you guys, and this is great that you're a K8, because when I work in K-12 school districts, invariably at some time when I attend a school board meeting, there's a conversation about the hiring or letting go of a sports coach. And it's not to say that sports aren't important, but if we spend our time in school board meetings talking about sports and the hiring or the unhappiness of us around a sports coach, then we're missing opportunities to talk about other things that can really impact the school and the outcomes for kids. And so, they say in this that if we're going to be effective, if we're going to be this effective school board, that we really need to ensure that we have a strategic plan that's guiding both us and our leadership team. So, those are sort of your common reasons for getting there. A recent strategic plan that I worked on was for an organization called North Country Education Services. And North Country Education Services is actually a provider of services to school districts, but they provide a great case study on why to strategically plan. And so, they've been around since, I guess, around the '60s, when they were originally funded by the federal government to provide things like professional development, hearing, services, physical therapy, occupational therapy, things like that. So, they've been around for a long time. But what they're noticing in the North Country, and we're noticing, by the way, in most places in New Hampshire, is that the decrease in student population, the decreasing number of students, is really starting to impact their schools. In other words, we're having tiny little class sizes, and so, the actual cost that we spend on kids is increasing. For North Country Educational Services, this becomes really key to their livelihood, because as school districts start to pull costs back, it doesn't allow them to continue to provide resources to the schools. And what's amazing about the North Country is that they've had, since between 2000 and 2010, they had a loss of over 1,700 students in their schools, and these are small little schools up there, but no change in overall population. So, let that sink in for a moment. A decrease of 1,700 students, but no change in overall population, which means that we have still the same number of people that need all kinds of different services, but fewer kids in our schools. And in these little school districts where you have 100 kids, it's costing them a lot of money. So, what was happening to North Country Ed Services is the revenue that was coming in for them, this is point number two for them, is that the revenue wasn't actually covering their costs. And so, they were dipping into their fund balance. And their fund balance in five years went from $800,000 to about $300,000. So, they were cutting into their fund balance at a really rapid rate. And lastly, for them, is that the change in priorities, so their local school districts were changing their priorities, so these are the people that they serve, started to take services away from these guys. And so, what they did was, they sat down and they said, look, we have $300,000 in the bank, things aren't looking good for us right now, but if we're going to prepare ourselves for the future, we better sit down and actually think strategically about this. And that's what the board decided to do, is say, let's put a strategic plan together so that we can figure out how to interact with our community that's rapidly changing in the future. And so, the point being is that strategic planning comes from a lot of places. One, it's the right thing to do, sure, but it also commonly comes from a place of you're under a lot of pressure, some sort of pressure. And a lot of school districts in New Hampshire are under the pressure of increasing costs for fewer students. And so, taxpayers are feeling that burden and expressing that feeling to their elected officials. And so, this starts to put us in a position where we're saying, look, if we're going to think about the future and we're going to think about our taxpayers' ability to pay, we need to have this conversation. But two, right, education is changing for our kids. The world is changing really rapidly, and as a school district, we want to be prepared to handle that. And if you want to think about a metaphor for being prepared to handle a changing future, take a moment and think, when's the last time you rented a movie from Blockbuster? When's the last time you watched a movie on Netflix? You know, Blockbuster sold for $8.4 billion in 1995, the same year the DVD was invented. Blockbuster went bankrupt in 2010. Netflix now has 83 million subscribers. Blockbuster did not take the time to think about the changing world around them and adapt. And I'm not saying that school districts are going to be Netflixed, but if we don't acknowledge that the world is changing around us and take time to think strategically, we might be surprised in five years or 10 years to learn what changes are happening and which ones we got behind. All right, so, and one of the challenges I would present to you guys is really to take a moment, not now, because I know I'm running behind my time now, is really to take a moment and say, what are the challenges that got you to the point where you thought strategic planning was important? And have a conversation as a board and say, what challenges do we want to take on? And I'll tell you, most boards and most school districts, when I talk to them, they say, you know what, we come to this point where we're making budgets in January, and we're not always sure what our priorities are. We want a framework for making decisions. We want a framework that allows us to agree on a set of priorities that our public had input on. And so, they almost always come to that decision, but there's other reasons, too. What do we hold the superintendent accountable for? That commonly comes up when boards talk about this. So, I would challenge you guys, no matter who you select to do this, before you do it, take a moment and talk about what are the challenges that you're hoping to address by developing a strategic plan. All right, so, I'm going to talk about the steps to develop a plan. And I really break this, by the way, I'm going to do this quickly, because I did write, I mean, I gave you guys a proposal, and most of this stuff is covered in the proposal, and I also acknowledge that these things are hard to read, because I'm addressing 10 tabs that you needed to be addressed in that process. So, I'm going to talk a little bit, but really, I want to give you an opportunity to ask me some questions about what I'm thinking of this process. I really break it down into three parts. This preparing part, which is just getting ready for strategic planning, it turns out to be really important, then also the planning, the actual planning part, and then the development of the plan and the implementation of the plan. Those are the three parts that I break it into. And quickly, the preparing part is really essentially getting documents together, pulling any data that are available for you. I develop a data profile for the school districts that I work with in this process, pulling together the data that are available publicly or that you provide. And this becomes really important in a little later in the conversation, that you have some data. But we do this in the early parts. We set timelines, we determine what reports are available, how quickly you want to finish these things, because I propose a timeline always, but sometimes folks say like, well, we want to have this done by January, you know, and it's December, and that really impacts how we do business. So, we set timelines early on. When we get into the planning stage, we spend time talking about mission, vision, and often values, although I didn't include that in my proposal, but I'm learning more and more that school districts really want to talk about their core values. And I know Northwood has an existing mission, an existing vision, and set of values, and those are great. I'm not, I haven't taken those to task or decided whether they're good or bad, but certainly, we would evaluate that as part of the process. I included in your packet on the left-hand side, three documents that we typically use, which is a checklist for the process. The second is to evaluate your existing plan, so you could leave this meeting, use that evaluation tool, and say, we actually don't need a new strategic plan. And lastly, is a mission evaluation form, which I use, and that's a process for you to take a look at your mission and say, yes, it's good, or we need to look at a new mission. And these are really core, because... Can I write on this whiteboard? Is that okay? Can you see if I write on the whiteboard?
Yeah, I believe so.
Okay, so, here's what we do. Here's the way I think about strategic planning. I think of it like this. Not a great marker. I'm going to grab another one. But first thing is that we take a box, and the box, the best box, is it? We take a box, and this is, in this process... This one is not the best marker either. Yeah, let's try another one. It actually may be the...
Maybe the whiteboard, not the marker.
I think it's the board. It looks like it's pretty old.
It's got a little bit of color to it, shall we say. I don't think all the markers used on this whiteboard were Expo dry erase markers. Okay, so, the first thing we do is, when we're thinking about strategic planning, is I write a box. And in this box, this box accounts for your mission. And folks, here's what a mission is. A mission just tells you what you do and what you don't do. And it's good to have a really clear what the school district does and what they don't do. In the case of school districts, and I was saying this to Adrian before, it seems like we do more and more and more, and there's more things inside our mission than outside our mission. But keep in mind, the reason we do this is so that we don't end up with mission creep. Have you guys ever heard that expression? Where what we end up doing is we start looking for things to do, or people start proposing things, and it seems to fit with us. If we have a high-quality and clear mission, that's less likely to occur. The second thing we do is we set a vision, and I put the vision up here. And this vision is really what you want to be in five to 10 years. What do you want this organization to look like? What do you want to be achieving? This is big idea stuff, like I think of Oxfam. I think Oxfam's vision is something like a just world without poverty. I mean, that's really high-level aspirational stuff. There's a school district in Colorado, Aurora Public Schools, outside of Denver. Their mission, or their vision, sorry, is all students graduate with the opportunity to go to college without remediation. And this is a really important vision for this particular school district, because they had a lot of students that were leaving and then getting to college and having to pay remediation dollars, something like $1.6 billion a year that students pay for non-courses that don't count towards their credits. And this district said, our vision is to get every kid out of here without having to remediate in the future. This is really important in this process. The next thing we do is we do an assessment of where we are today. Where are we relative to our vision? And this is where the data become really key. This is where having to set a data to look at. Look, we all have opinions of where our school district is relative to our vision, but data allow us to put those opinions into sort of more concrete terms. One of the things I do with most school districts is we do a survey. I've developed a survey over time of working with school districts that I think works pretty good. We customize that survey as districts want it, and then that's put out in an interactive dashboard that anybody can use to look at the data. So, we can put the survey out, we collect the data, we can put the dashboard out publicly or keep it internal for just the participants in the strategic planning process. But the key is that we're collecting different kinds of data, and one of the reasons I think surveys are great is because it allows our stakeholders to have a voice. It's relatively inexpensive and not perfect, but it's a good start. When I was working in SAU 39, which is Amherst Mount Vernon, we did a survey, and we did it open-ended questions, and we had 90% of the secondary students, so middle school through high school, respond to it. We had 250 teachers, or no, 250 parents, and over 100 teachers respond to it. And we spent about 80 hours coding those data, and so, I've moved away from that approach a little bit to a more efficient Likert-scaled survey, and it works pretty well to see what the community's priorities are. But what's key about this is after we've done an organizational assessment, is that we identify strategic issues. And this is the first key point in strategic planning, is strategic issues. And this is the first point where you have to make a really important decision. The strategic issues are your challenges presented either by the external forces or internal forces that will prevent you as an organization from getting where you are today to your vision for the future. And here's why this becomes a key decision point, is because you cannot do everything. You can do several things. I usually say, try to do fewer than seven, so try to identify fewer than seven strategic issues. And here's how this goes. In SAU 39, for example, they started out with 55 strategic issues, when they were done coming up with strategic issues. They pared it down to 16, then went to nine, and ultimately settled on seven strategic issues that were going to prevent the school district from getting where they were today to where they wanted to be in the future. Strategic issues are always posed as questions. They're posed as, how might we questions, preferably for me? If I can get you to pose them as, how might we, and open-ended questions. Why do we do that? Because, one, questions don't presume that there's an obvious answer. And two, why do we write them as, how might we questions? Because how might we, one, means they're probably solvable, and two, how might we? We can do it. And so, let me give you an example. When I went to SAU 39, they said, we want to do a strategic plan so that we can get the community to implement full-day kindergarten and foreign language K through 12. And I said, you don't need me to do that. What you need is you need to put a project plan in place and work with your community to get them to vote for this. You need a strategic plan if you have challenging questions facing the organization. And so, when they turned around and started looking at the organization, they said, one of the questions they came up with, and I don't have the exact wording of it, I probably do on a slide, but it was something like, how might we best prepare students for the 21st century, or something like that. So, it was an open-ended question that didn't have an obvious answer to it. This was one of their challenges. They're heavily impacted by changing student demographics, decrease in student population. So, their question ended up being something like, how can we become more efficient and streamline operations to improve? I can't remember exactly, but it was something along that lines. It was a core question for them to address. They phrase them as questions so that there was no obvious answer. It wasn't, how might we implement full-day kindergarten? Does this make sense to folks? Now, if we think about strategic planning as building a bridge to the future, what your strategic issues do is show you where to build that bridge. That's it. They're telling you, you must build them here, here, and there. And by the way, when we identify and reduce our strategic issues to a manageable number, it should feel a little bit like there's winners and losers. In other words, you have to make hard decisions as a board. You have to identify the things that are priorities for you to address, and if you don't feel a little bit like, maybe I didn't get everything I wanted, or maybe we're not focused on everything that I thought was important, then you probably haven't deliberated hard enough about core issues. And this happened in SAU 39 for sure, actually everywhere I've ever worked, this has happened where they've gotten down to it and they've had, you know, somewhere in 10, 11 issues, and they've been unsure how to get down to those last couple, and they've really had to talk that out. This, right here, is your plan, building the bridge to the future. Once you have your strategic issues, you develop goals from those and start to identify your strategies for getting you to the future. And strategies are high-level stuff, you know? It's not like we're going to implement full-day kindergarten, and here's all the steps that are going to get us there. It's like, we're going to implement full-day kindergarten. That's the level at which strategic planning happens. Now, you have to have action plans and implementation plans that follow that. Let me describe briefly how SAU 39 did this. It was really interesting and an exciting process. When they got to strategic issues as a board, they did it as a board, by the way, 17-member board, they did it as a board, and then they narrowed down the issues, and then they invited the public in, and they said, here's our strategic issues. Seven strategic, five strategic theme areas. They had seven issues, but they had five theme areas. They brought speakers in to talk about each of the theme areas and what was going on in the world around them, and then from that, they created committees of the public and the staff that then would come up with the strategies that would go into the strategic plan. And then, they reported back to the board, and then the board, based on what the committees reported back, decided on what they wanted to go into the strategic plan, took it forward from there. It was a really great way to engage the public. Now, not every, it turns out that every time I've worked on a strategic plan, they've gone a little bit different, but that was a really interesting way to try to engage the public. In SAU 60, which is Fall Mountain, where I'm working right now as well, the board more has tried to work with the community and the staff a little bit along the way, more having small meetings, coming to after-school meetings with teachers, coming to after-school meetings with parents to talk about what's going on in the strategic plan. When we get down to the end, the goal really is to develop a plan that can be shared with your leaders and show the leaders where you're headed and public, and really communicates that. I included several examples in the proposal that I submitted. Only one example did I include in the folder that I provided you. I just figured you already had some examples. In the proposal, I included an example from Adams 14, which was a school district where I worked and first got into strategic planning, and you'll see in that strategic plan, it's very detailed on what we're doing and heavy emphasis on performance management as part of the core process, the tool for measuring whether we're doing it or not doing it. What you see in SAU 60 is a draft plan. It's pretty new. You see bigger themes of where they're headed as a school district. At NCS, I described that one, there's three big themes in their plan, and then they're using that plan as a board to oversee it. SAU 39 also did something really interesting. After they completed their plan, they kept the committees together to hold the district accountable and to continue to work on their core strategies. I know I was talking really fast, slightly thrown off by technological hiccups, but I hope you guys got the picture of what I was working on. Also included a brochure that I think covers the same material in much shorter language than I did tonight. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Survey goes out to whom?
It's up to you. What I find is that parents, staff, and if you invite students, they will all respond. In general, I've never been anywhere where we've had good success in getting public returns, but I'm always open to trying it. In Fall Mountain, what we did was, we went around to like community places, community centers, just all things around, and we took ballot boxes, you know, cardboard ballot boxes, and placed them all around the community with blank paper surveys. around the community with blank paper surveys so that it didn't have to be electronic. Most cases, we do it electronically because it's inexpensive. It gets expensive if you have to start doing paper, but we wanted to try to reach these folks, and we put them out all over the school district, and I think we got four responses. I don't know if that's the exact number, but it was a small number. I mean, we had 30 ballot boxes that we put out, surveys all over the school district. One place where it can be really effective is if you have active, you know, town meetings, you'll get lots of responses and things like that. But a lot of times, school districts, you know, timing doesn't line up, or they want to get them done by a certain amount of time, and so you can't always make it happen. I think in SAU 39, we had, in that case, we got it in the paper and everything. We did press releases and got things in the paper, and we maybe had 20-something, it was a bigger number than Fall Mountain, but of non-connected community members. So it's always a challenge to do that.
So you're not against it?
Absolutely not, no. In fact, I think it's one of these things that we always struggle with, is how to get the community voice in that doesn't have, you know, isn't a staff member, isn't a parent of a kid.
We have that conduit, so.
Great.
I mean, we have a newspaper that goes to every house in town.
Yep.
So it's easy enough to put for $117 a survey. How big is the survey?
It's...
How many pages?
Oh, it's a couple pages, probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
So no more than two pages front and back?
I can't remember, to be honest with you. It might be two, it might be four. It's not long, you know, it might be 25 items total.
One of the things that is more apparent because of the paperwork you gave us with you than it was the other company we were talking to is the amount of meetings, and I'm assuming these meetings are going to include teachers?
It varies. This is one of the things that we do in the preparing stage, is to determine what you, how you want to structure your strategic planning team. So, for example, SAU 60, the board wanted to be the core team, like they wanted to do the work. In 39, the board wanted to do the work up to the point where they got the strategic issues, and then they wanted to roll it out to other folks. I always advise people that you need to try to include as many people as you can as early in the process as possible.
I'm just looking at meeting one, four hours, meeting two, four hours, so on and so forth, meeting three, four, five, six.
Yep.
And if those are held during the day, Monday through Friday, and we wanted and I would want to include some teachers, that's another expense that we would have to consider.
Yes, you would have to consider that expense, absolutely.
Another, you know, it's always comes down to money.
Okay. I agree. It's another expense. If that's the strategy that you go, which I certainly encourage you to do.
I'm just one member, but I mean, teachers in our schools certainly have a say or should have a say. I mean, they certainly have skin in the game.
I agree. And I'll tell you, when teachers don't feel like they have a say, you struggle a little bit.
Yeah.
Especially when they roll out.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming.
Discussions tonight, and then we'll be in touch one way or another.
If you want to get these slides to us, we could forward them around, so at least we could see them if...
Yeah, we'll see how it works.
If not...
I'll send them to you.
If you can ship them to me, I'll get them to them.
Did you get your USB back?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay, tell you what, folks, we have a wellness policy to approve, and then how about we do that and we'll take a little break before superintendent's report? This is the second reading. I believe this is when we approve it for...
Yep.
So if anyone would like to make the motion to approve it, then we can have a discussion on it.
Motion to approve policy JLCF Wellness Policy.
Second that. Any discussion on this policy? Everybody got a chance to read it over?
This one to the policy committee already.
Yes.
We did discuss the things that were brought up and...
Nothing was changed.
Changed. The only question I have is, and I can't remember because I can't find it in the minutes, what did we agree upon that we would put, so revised by the board? Are we just putting the date? We're not putting names, we're just putting dates? Is that what we agreed upon? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I had remembered that right.
Yeah, we were doing just the date.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Anyone in favor of approving the wellness policy?
Aye.
Aye.
Upstee.
One abstain, four zero one. All right, why don't we take five minutes? Have us sit down too long. About that, D20, superintendent's report. Take it away.
We'll see what they all think.
Okay, I'll start on page 41. Page 41 for your, in your personnel report. The first name I want to take separately, Allison Roberts as the AP mentor mentoring for Adrian Alford. We've had the mentoring program, and it's really established itself well for the teaching staff, and this is just an extension from that. Allison Roberts is the assistant principal in Strafford. This is her third year there, and she's in a doctoral program through Plymouth State University for educational leadership, and what I'm having her do is be the mentor for not only Adrian here in Northwood, but also the new assistant principal down in Nottingham as well. So we get, we get twice the bang for the buck with that one because it allows our three assistant principals to have not only a mentor, but a peer group as well for professional discussions and mentoring. So nomination of Allison Roberts for the AP mentor, and that's going to be out of REAP money.
So move, just informational?
Out of what money?
REAP Rural Education Grant.
Second that. Any discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded?
And the following nominations are informational for your building and leadership team representatives that was discussed at a prior meeting, as well as your games club co-facilitator, and you've also got a book club co-facilitator, and the personnel report that I handed out to you with one name on it that goes along with this list. So unless you have any questions, those are your information.
All right, thank you.
All right. An update on the AmeriCorps grant. I just want to say that we've had a lot of people working very hard on trying to gather information on this. Myself, Jocelyn, Joe Gunter, Fred Wolf, Linda Kramis, met a number of times, placed a number of phone calls, met with Volunteer New Hampshire, who is the sub-grantee for AmeriCorps. The AmeriCorps money goes to New Hampshire through Volunteer New Hampshire and then gets handed out from there to the local grants. After meeting with them, it was apparent that their expectations were on such a scale that it would not fit for us. So that grant was the number of hours, the number of volunteers, the background in science, we're focusing on ELA and math. So it really wasn't going to work. So we asked them if there was another step that we could take. They mentioned planning grants, and we questioned them about that, but basically the planning grants were such that it would be rewriting the existing grant, and then the same kind of expectations and stipulations were put in with that, too. So basically, what we came up with in the end was, we're going to try to hitch up with Granite State Education Corp. What that is, is they're working through an AmeriCorps grant with Volunteer New Hampshire right now, and they have an opportunity for us to be a host site. And what that means is instead of having 1,200 hours and 20 volunteers and some unrealistic expectations that we quite frankly can't meet here, the Granite State Education Corp. is the one that needs to have 20 volunteers, and they disperse them out to other areas throughout New Hampshire. So we're in the process right now of trying to get information from them to be a host site and possibly meeting the same needs on kind of a smaller scale with what we can handle locally. So as that plays out, I'll keep the board informed and see if we can move forward in that way. So that's where we're at right now. Along with that, I went to the Bradley Kidder Law Conference earlier this week. A lot of wonderful topics and information. I've got all of the slides and the information and the presentations. I'm going to send you out links that you can access all of that information. I was going to send it out with the stick, but I think it's going to kind of bind up your computer, but I'll send you the links. Joe, you want those, too?
No, no, I was thinking of sending them.
Oh, okay. So I'll send those links out to everybody so you can access that information. If you have any other questions, let me know. And the only other thing I had was to see if we wanted to have a non-meeting at the end just for negotiations.
That'd probably be a good idea. People are available after the meeting.
We need to have a non-meeting. Yep. That's all I had.
Any questions to the superintendent? Going, going, gone. We'll move on to new business then. I didn't see any, we're going to have a discussion about the math results. Tim, did you have some questions you wanted to ask about that?
No, no, I do, but not tonight. Things have gone on too long. What?
Okay, sorry.
I have a list of questions I was going to ask during the principals thing, but we had the others, so I'll wait till next meeting.
Confused, I guess.
I'm sorry?
You have questions about the math, the math results or something different?
Something different, I guess.
Okay, okay. Does anybody else want to bring up anything about the math results? Time allocated for it now? No? Okay, then. Any subcommittee meetings that we should be aware of? I guess I'd say we have started negotiations with the paraprofessionals. I don't think the technology committee is due to meet soon, next week maybe, next week after, and then I'll be at that meeting finally. Other committees, the policy committee met for the wellness?
We met for the wellness one, and we brought that forward, and we'll hopefully meet before the next meeting to go over what Barrett brought back.
Right, that's good.
I'll try. I, yeah, we'll try. And then we're, oh, not with Tim and I, are negotiating too, with the teachers.
Any facilities news?
No.
Athletics, you're on athletics, too, right?
Eleven.
Budget committee, we're looking good.
October 18th, the budget committee sent a list of requests to myself and Marjorie, and I believe Marjorie is working on getting that stuff together, so.
She was yesterday at least, when I was in there. Any other committees I've forgotten about? Seeing none. What's up next? Old business, the district goals discussion. I see in our packet we do have a list of the district goals. That, thank you very much for typing this up for us.
It's in black and white, though, so you can't really tell the highlighted ones. I'm still feeling a problem.
Yeah, I brought...
The ones were supposed to be the ones that pertain to the SAU instead of Northwood.
I tried to figure that out at the SAU meeting, and I had the same problem because they weren't. It was black and white. I couldn't, I couldn't, we did, well, I did because I was there, present almost all of these to the joint board meeting as well for the district, the SAU level stuff.
You did, or you will?
I did.
Oh, you did. Yeah, I missed that one.
And I think they just added it to their list, and then we'll see what, where it goes from there. I'm honestly not sure where to go with these right now. I'm not sure what our next step should be, so if somebody has ideas, I'd be happy to hear them.
Should be given to our strategic planning company?
Yeah, maybe, right.
If we do that, we go that route. And we didn't agree on any of these. This was just kind of a dump all for every, everything that we talked about. So I don't know if everybody agrees on every one of these.
Right.
I would say probably not.
Boy, that's a good guess.
But they're in there. It's a place to start, which is...
Yeah, no, and I agree with it. It's a place to start. I just, I would hope that when we finally are able to get together and give Dr. Godomski a list of goals that we're talking in the area of five or six, not two pages.
Well, these are just...
I understand.
Ideas. They're not saying that these are going to be the goals. These are things we need to choose.
So I'm just saying that I hope that we can, as he said with District 39, it started out with a million and they ended up with seven, you know, and I think some of these are very good. I don't have the advantage of knowing which ones you thought were more important by highlighting, so I don't know which you...
Well, the highlighted ones are the ones that pertain to the SAU.
Okay, so I don't know which...
Or that could pertain to the SAU. I didn't prioritize any of these. I didn't think that was my place. I just put them all in here because we talked about them. If you wanted me to order them, we didn't talk about which ones we thought were the most important. We didn't get that far, so.
Right, we didn't. So how do we want to move forward with this then? Should we plan some time to actually sit down or use this time now and actually try to figure out what is the most important?
I liked that we sat together in a non-meeting and, you know, came up with these at the beginning of the year, and I think we had said at that point that we were going to try to do that again.
Yeah, we got to take our goals, compare them to these goals. I think we need a work session.
We can do it. You guys want to do a work session?
Using this document as something to go off, maybe we could come up with one or two choices from each of these categories and use those for Dr. Godomski.
Yeah, I think it is a meeting, by the way. It's a work session.
Yeah, it's a work session.
But yeah, okay. Let's, I think it's a good idea. Let's schedule a work session and go over these again and try to call them down to what we need them to be. Busy time of the year is all.
That's true, yeah.
I'm just looking at our future agenda, I mean, our future meetings. We have a meeting on the 20th, a meeting on the 3rd, November 3rd. Is there an evening that works for people that's not Thursday? Or do we want to have a light agenda, maybe one of these, and have a work session afterwards? We could do that as well.
I don't like that idea because it never really goes that way.
Yeah.
I mean, there's just a few nights I want to be at the budget committee. I mean, I'm available any night, really.
Me, too. Nights are perfect for me.
I don't really care what night it is.
Okay.
Not October 18th, since I will be at the budget committee, but other than that, I have no preference.
All my nights are equally bad, so it makes no difference to me in a way, either. So our next, next meeting's the 20th. Or the 13th, next week. Do I do that, or do we want to skip and maybe do it after our next board meeting on the 27th? Which would be better for me, probably, but...
That works.
That's, no, that's October.
October.
October 27th.
October 27th.
What day of the week is that?
It's a Thursday.
Sure.
That works.
October 27th, we can schedule?
Fine by me.
So we'll do 6:30?
And it's a one-agenda item, right?
Yeah. Work on, working on district goals.
6:30, you said?
6:30, yeah. We'll do it here, I assume, will be okay.
Are we putting that strategic planning back on the agenda next time to make a decision?
I was going to ask you guys about that. Yeah, that's, that was my thought. Either we decide at the next meeting or the meeting after, or, I don't know, give people at least two weeks to digest all the information. I would think our next meeting would be, would be fine.
Decision on...
Yeah. You guys okay with deciding that next meeting?
We, and I am. I just need to, I'm going to see if I can contact...
39?
39 and get a copy of their strategic plan. I just need to see what one looks like.
That'd be great.
For whatever reason, I need to see it. I just, I'm a visual person. I don't quite understand it yet, but, so the other issue is... I don't quite understand it yet, but, so the other issue is dollars and cents. I mean, we heard that we're going to need another paraprofessional. That's more than a few dollars.
Right.
And so we really have to look at that, and I just, if you look at it, there is going to be, and we need to have that discussion, some extra cost to this. It's not, I don't remember what the two costs, but if, let's say one's 20 and one's 21,000. It's not, that's not the end of it. There are going to be...
First one was 34, the second one was 20.
Okay, so there's going to be some, either one, there's going to be some additional costs that we have to figure into. If we're going to do it, then we should do it right and figure out how to pay for it.
Yeah, so Scott will, Scott said he'd probably know by next meeting, right?
Probably, probably.
It'd be great to have that information and the finances on that, so, because it might matter.
But those things, you know, you have to keep some money. Those, another student could move in, or two could move out. You just, you just simply don't know.
Somebody had moved in. I haven't looked at this yet.
Well, I'm not, I don't care about Coe-Brown, because we have a fund at Coe-Brown. And we do have a fund for special education also, by the way.
Yeah, it's not much, huh? It's like 25, I think, right now?
No, no, it's more than that. We've had a couple of years we've had to put into it. The goal was to get to 100. I think it's at least 50. So I'm just saying, though, that we do have to pay attention to dollars and cents. I absolutely don't want to be part of overspending.
Are we having a discussion on these the next time, or are we just voting?
On the plans?
Yeah.
Love discussion. Discussion and vote, I would imagine. We could probably do it at the same time for that.
Yeah. Sorry, I was just going to ask for the people that are here tonight, are we going to ask for any input, or are we just making this decision? Because they are part of this...
Which people are you talking about?
The audience members, the teachers specifically.
They could certainly give us our input during their three minutes, if they want to.
And they are always free to contact us individually after meetings as well, yeah.
My plan would be to ask the Budget Committee also, a member of the Budget Committee, to be part of the process. There's usually at least one of them here.
Therapy, and then, don't talk to them.
Okay, we're moving on from that.
For the work session? For the work session, who do you want at the work session? Do you want minutes?
Well, we need...
Do you want, do you want me there? Do you want building administration? Who do you want at your meeting?
I don't think we need any of that.
No. Yeah, plus, minutes perhaps, but we could, because it's a public meeting, we have to have minutes.
Well, yes, but we could take...
We could take our own minutes.
Simple minutes. I mean, really, we're, it's a one-subject.
So are you, do you need minutes, or are you going to take your own?
We'll take our own.
They're going to take their own.
Okay.
Tim's going to type.
There you go.
On the computer.
Yeah.
I can type on a typewriter.
Okay.
Do they still have those? Does the school own a typewriter? That would be interesting. I'd like to see you set that up and take those notes.
Dennis, Dennis Williams is my neighbor, and he makes a living servicing mostly for the state typewriters. You will be amazed at how many electric typewriters are still being used in this state.
Parking lot items.
That's why it takes so long to get things done.
Budget development. I don't see anything interesting on here other than the clubs' financial support discussion. And I don't, there's a, on our parking lot?
Oh, in the club.
We have a clubs' financial support discussion.
Oh, and that was the adding more money to the clubs. I think that was the discussion we wanted to have.
Something I could definitely do.
Or splitting out drama, or, tell you what, the Clubs Committee is going to meet about...
I don't think that was fair, considering our computers snafu tonight.
What's that?
Her statement about nothing getting done at the state. I don't think that was quite fair, considering our computers snafu tonight and not getting things done.
I didn't say nothing gets done. I just said it takes time to get things done.
So could the Clubs Committee, since you guys are going to be meeting for, going over para-contracts, could you come back with a recommendation as what we should do?
Well, that's para, but this was like...
No, no, we could, we could have another Clubs Committee meeting and meet and...
With the teachers, because I, I think that was more of the teachers' part of it. That's where those big, that big number was.
Yeah, if you want to ask for more money, split out, put in a budget.
Well, and I think that'll come up, too, when we talk later, too.
Yeah, it'd be great to just have their opinion. Some discussion, get an opinion as to what it should be, or, you know, a request. You know, what's the Club Committee's recommendation, so what we should do for these things, right? And then, and then we can figure that, talk about that. Right now, it's just nebulous, right? So we don't have anything to talk about directly. More timeline, September...
October.
You're right, October. My mistake. We are bargaining, budget preparation is beginning, I believe, for SAUs.
As it is.
Staff list, all personnel.
Should be now.
That's also superintendent evaluation. That's at the SAU level, and we are working on that in the joint board meetings. Okay. Agenda items for our next meeting. I have, that we will hopefully get a recommendation about the athletics policy. By the way, I emailed you, and Scott, the, what, what I agreed to last year. We will approve the para-professional clubs. We will have a discussion and hopefully make a decision on strategic planning, consult. And that's all I have on here. Anyone else want to add anything for our agenda in two weeks?
I didn't see it last month, and I saw Facebook chatter, and I looked on the agenda, and it wasn't on there, about putting the kindergarten in the budget or warrant article. Now, we talked about it two meetings ago, and it just left there.
Right, we never made a decision.
I think we need to make that decision.
I thought, I thought we were having that more once we got into the budget.
I think we need, I mean, so did I, but...
Oh, because I, I mean, it'd be nice to see what the bottom line of the budget is, what it's going to be before we...
Right. I think we, I don't know, with it being a hot topic and one of the hottest topics, I'd like to get it out there, get the public's opinion, more on it.
Like I said, I don't care how we get it on there, I just want it on there.
Because I know when it comes on the budget season, we're going to have the kindergarten, and that's going to take majority of the time, and then we're going to, so...
The way I think we left that, and maybe we can change this, the way I think we left that is that, is we let the business administrator know that we were planning on doing something with it, either warrant article or being in the budget, so they could work up the numbers on it. And then we're going to wait and see where things keep on the budget and stuff like that, but we could definitely bring it up again and then have a discussion.
So at this point, just cost it out and keep it separate, and then we'll decide what we're going to do with it.
That was how I thought we had left it.
Okay, that sounds good, cost it out. Because that's a teacher, a para, and whatever else.
And if we can do something with buses.
Right, it's 100 and somewhat $1,000. I can't remember what it was last year. 105 last year.
Do you want to go more than that, though? Do you want to actually have more discussion?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
All right, we'll put it on the agenda.
I think it's, it's going to be the biggest part of it, warrant article or in the budget.
Okay.
And I think we need to have that discussion.
Kindergarten discussion.
Yeah, we'll put that on the agenda, then. That's fine.
So I guess we'll need a cost.
Yep, that would definitely help.
Yeah, for the next meeting.
Yep.
We can do that.
Any other agenda items people would like to add? Okay, our next meeting is in two weeks, October 20th, here at 6:30. The following Monday, October 24th, at 6:15, we have the joint board meeting at the SAU. November 3rd is another regular board meeting, and then November 16th, we have a joint board meeting at Coe-Brown, which is always fun, and usually there's food, but those ones. Is there any closing public comment?
Since you brought up the kindergarten thing and whatever, I've done some more thinking since I was at the last meeting, two meetings ago, and I've spoken with a number of people around town, and the feedback I've been getting is that you should put it in the budget. That's going to show both the savings on the transportation line, because you'd be taking out the midday bus. You're showing what the additional cost is for kindergarten, or I'm assuming it's spread out over several lines. It's not going to be a line just for kindergarten. It's going to be additional staff and that kind of thing. If the operating budget doesn't pass, you still have in the default budget the money for the midday kindergarten bus, so you're not losing anything there. Additionally, from my own perspective, the way I'm looking at this budget season for the school board, you've got $390,000 in a bond payment that's no longer there.
$290,000.
Excuse me, $290,000 plus the small amount of interest. You had, what was the amount you finally are turning back, somewhere in the vicinity of 400,000 to 500,000? I personally would anticipate this budget coming in considerably lower than the default budget, by several hundred thousand dollars, which should eliminate any concerns about the operating budget passing, because, let's face it, most people in town are going to vote for the lower budget. If your operating budget is reasonable and it includes the kindergarten, then you don't have to worry about a warrant article. Number one. Number two, you had mentioned possibly getting some feedback on the two presentations tonight, and listening to both of them, I believe gentleman number two would be a better fit for this board. I believe that his style will work better with the various personalities involved. I think the first one, while very good, and I made a note, yeah, I'd hire him, I think they may be too regimented and not be as, what was the word I used?
Millennial?
I'm sorry?
Not millennial?
What is a millennial? I know I'm not it, but I don't know what millennials are, or the X group, or the, I don't know. Anyway, that's, that's my thought. I think that the second gentleman would be a better fit, and you would be happier with the end result. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Shirley Glenn, and I missed the initial public comment. I was running a little late today. But I wanted to second what Ginger said. I agree, I think putting it in the budget just shows a stronger support for it, and you're going to have people who are concerned with the school coming out to vote and support the budget overall, who maybe are not as focused just on kindergarten, even if they support it, if their kids are not going into kindergarten anymore, that sort of thing. It may be something that they are a little more ambivalent on, so I think that you will see the support for that go through if you really want to back it. I think putting it in the budget would be good. I also agreed, I felt that the second candidate that you guys had for the strategic planning just seemed really had in-depth knowledge of the school systems personally and professionally, well, professionally in his past careers, as well as what he's doing now. So I think that you're going to see somebody who has insight when you come up with, okay, well, what are we going to do with this? He's going to be understanding to the struggles that you're facing as a K-8 school, where the other groups seemed a little bit more corporate and more business-focused, so they might not have that attention to detail. And one last thing, just talking about clubs, I know some third-grade kids who would be really interested in some clubs that were based more around STEM or robotics or something in that sort of field. So I would love to see an opportunity for that, and I know some parents, including myself, would be willing to volunteer and help with that. So if it's a matter of resources, I just don't know all the science teachers or the teachers who would be interested in that as well yet, being that my kids are a little younger. So we would love to see some sort of robotics or STEM implemented in in the next two years if we could get that going, so. And thank you, guys.
Thanks. Sure.
Hi, Lee Cronin, teaching fifth grade here. A couple of things, I think both of the presenters mentioned about the three to five, maybe 10 years out, and I think that's a really critical point, because our students and the society and culture that they are living in is different, and I think we need to, as educators, think about that, and what are their needs going to be, and have those deep discussions. I think the first presenters, although a little bit older, have and bring forth not just years of experience, but more global years of experience, instead of just being, listening to the man, he was only seven years working for the state with New Hampshire, although being from Colorado. Everybody has an opinion. I'm going to go home and digest this like all of you. I think it is very important, though. I think as an educator, I'd be like, okay, this is where the school board wants to bring us in, whatever timeline you decide. I think it would be positive for the school and the community.
Right, thank you. Yes, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, I'm a resident of on Lucas Pono Road. My name is Rick Wolf. I think if you people bury the kindergarten in the budget, you're going to have a hard time. I don't think that's the way to do it. It's my personal opinion, I'm speaking as a resident, and I think that's the wrong road to go down. And I'd like to say another thing. I come to these meetings, and a lot of people talk very low. I'm hard-earring, and I can't imagine that anybody in the back of the room can hear some of you people speak. You put your head down, and there's some people that I don't even hear what they say. So if you could speak louder, or we need a speaker so people can be heard, I think when you go to a meeting and spend your time to go to a meeting, you should be able to hear what everybody's got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary's like, "Oh."
I can hear it, yeah. It sounds like Gary, and I don't want to point people out.
Now, thank you very much for that feedback. I will try, I'm, I'm out of time. Any other public comment? Any comment from the board members before we adjourn?
I had just something I said before about the budget, and some, it's a tool that we need to work together as a group to get results for the community. And it's, I guess, it's the most essential part of building the community and putting the community together is the budget. You know, the budget tells everything, and if it's backed by all of the board members, right, that the budget is what we're giving to the community to make this school better, then it's going to pass. If we all are separate on our opinions of the budget, then we're not going to get it passed. So, I mean, we've got a couple of months, that's why I wanted to bring up the kindergarten discussion for next, it's going to be one of those things. Just heard it from Mr. Wolf. But in the budget, it's not going to pass. I want to see it in the budget. So how are we going to make that happen?